7-day special session, second day. We have to remember that House of Delegates has not been moved. The government has declared that we will not move it. Clerk of the House of Commons.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oi.
Delegate Arura.
Oi.
Delegate Basilius.
Oi.
Delegate Gibbons Junior. Delegate Colibert. Delegate Tissal.
Oi.
Floriter Kanai.
Oi.
Delegate Kamsong. Delegate Marino.
Atiyang.
Delegate Ngamais. Vice Speaker Ngiraywet. Delegate Ngiratkak Kanai.
Oi.
Delegate Ongitobla. Delegate Otobda.
Oi.
Delegate Lulga.
Oi.
Delegate Saiske. Mr. Speaker, would you like to call?
I would like to call, but I don't have time. The eleven delegates in Atiyang, Delegate Rangrumruu, I have to go to the airport. I have to go to the airport. Delegate Saiske, I have to go to the airport. Delegate Ngamais, I have to go to the airport. Delegate Colibert, Delegate Gibbons Junior, I have to go to the airport. 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 Eleven government to take over. I have to go to the airport. 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 With that, I would like to ask Florider. I would like to ask Florider. I would like to ask Florider. Saint Joseph Church Choir. I would like to ask Florider. 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 I would like to ask Florider.
Speaker, I would like to ask. 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 I would like to ask.
Oi. Clerk of the House of Commons.
Speaker, I would like to ask. 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 I would like to ask.
I would like to ask.
Clerk of the House of Commons, do you have time? On top. I would like to ask. Florider, do you have time? Clerk of the House of Commons.
I would like to ask. 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 I have declared that I would move it. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. Saint Joseph Church Choir. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask.
Good morning. I would like to ask. 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 I would like to ask.
Tell me, dear one. You are singing, you are singing. And when you are singing, you are singing. You are singing, you are singing. Oh, Jesus, Father of me. Oh, Jesus, Father of me. In the way, my heart. In the heart, you are with me. And you are singing, you are singing. Glory, I am singing. Glory, I am singing. My heart, you are with me. Oh, Jesus, Father of me. Oh, Jesus, Father of me. In the way, my heart. In the heart, you are with me. Oh, Jesus, Father of me. Oh, Jesus, Father of me. In the way, my heart. In the heart, you are with me. In the heart, you are with me.
Silent night. Holy night. All is calm. All is bright. Round yon virgin mother and child. Holy and faithful, tender and mild. Sleep in heaven peace. Sleep in heaven peace. Oh, together. Ena no lege, virene. Virene, virene, adusa. Ya da ni bo. Oh, mi rey. Hare, mi wey, masuya, lafa. Hare, mi merima.
Merry Christmas!
Speaker, I would like to ask. Saint Joseph. Speaker, I would like to ask. 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 I would like to ask.
I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. Clerk of the House of Commons.
I would like to ask. 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 I would like to ask.
Clerk of the House of Commons. Delegate to Obey, South West.
Good morning, Florider. Speaker, I would like to ask. 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 Of course, I would like to ask. I would like to ask. It is a long time. The time is running out. It is too late. I would like to ask. 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 Good morning, Speaker.
Good morning.
I would like to ask. 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 I would like to ask.
Mr. Speaker. I would like to ask. 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 Anyway, we want to see that, Speaker. The other Belav, in the past, I have talked about it. But the other, South West, well, what I see today, this morning, at this session, is different. The other Belav. Good morning, Mr. Speaker.
Good morning, Delegate to Obey. I would like to ask. 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 Florider.
I would like to ask.
Good morning.
Good morning, Florider. I would like to ask. 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 Speaker, I would like to ask. 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 Good morning. I would like to ask. 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 Good morning, Speaker.
Good morning, Delegate to Obey. Florider. Clerk of the House of Commons.
Speaker, I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. Speaker, I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. 14 special session. First day journal, 14 regular session. First day journal, 15 special session.
Clerk of the House of Commons, do you have time? On top. I would like to ask. Clerk of the House of Commons.
Speaker, I would like to ask. 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 23 day of 15 regular session. First day of 16 special session. Second day, 16 special session. Fourth day, 16 special session. First day, 17, 16 regular session. Fifteen day of 16 regular session. First day, 17 special session.
Clerk of the House of Commons, do you have time? Florider, I would like to ask. 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 I would like to ask.
Speaker, I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask. I would like to ask.
Clerk of the House of Commons, do you have time? I would like to ask. Clerk of the House of Commons, do you have time? On top. I would like to ask. Florider.
Speaker, I would like to ask. I would like to ask. Press Camp 235, Executive Clemency for Quincy Kunigiro. Clemency, the Clemency, Mr. Quincy Kunigiro. 236, President of the Congress. Attachment to Senate Resolution Number 10, 68. attachment se l senate resolution number ten, a sixty eight, ma house resolution number ten, a seventy three, se l i gra BSC loan. Ulubong, communication president mergi da, two dori seven, number nil, i transmita se l, eh, siyan development bank loan, e gi de la PP shield, ten million. Gi damal mal, item six, di communication, ma department me, e ngari a alir, al tang, minister sadang, espiri mergao, el gi de se gorra mo tigertil vidro, ikiel funds from compact investment accounts, mesel, gira, attachment se l certification of asset two dori gi. Ah, ulubong, communication, se gi de, item six, a, eh, two, emla ra, minister Temil, MCA, mergao espiri, el diosiga support, el gi de la, ikiel program ra ngalga, el gi de la Christmas. Kadama, morsel, item eight, ngari a, communication, a senate mergi de, ngari a tablo, communication, a senate mergi de, ngari se l house resolution number ten, a seventy three, sixteen, direklu, gi de la, BSC loan. Se four dori na, na, ah, wuk, gi de se l house be number ten, a one sixteen, a eleven, H1, S1, se l i gra Palau telegrama. E gi de, morsel, item nine, ngari a tablo, standing committee report, emra se actually, spigir, ngari se, kalender gi de di one, e di gu gi ti ati ala, el angemo, on, ogi, diha, misi gi de, imol, ah, item, item nine, ma, me, a motion, ba, the, adapt, resting committee report number ten, a one twenty four, tiang a gi de la house resolution number ten, a seventy four, a seventeen S.
Ngari a seven. Se gi de motion, number ten, committee report, emla second day, mang, di we ra, do podo, consider se gi de, edo li tra chairman committee, ma, adra, ways and means committee, meski da, ah, do, report ti agi de, house resolution, el mo go gi ra, gor state mu, mo longira, a, lo, me, e, million dollars. El gi de la, ah, public programs and state operations. Ak mu, a ulal, miskae, chairman, ways and means, ma, a direct vice chairman.
Sula ti ala, Mr. Spigir de, ma, mi tutal mergao, ma, espiri, ma Flori de, ma bekl members in attendance this morning. Mr. Spigir, agote, committee ra, mit mo, mo report, ti ati standing committee report, ten, a one twenty four, e niya gi de la house resolution, ten, a seventy four, a seventeen S. And Mr. Spigir de, agote, me gur nganagro sule la, sulem, bekl member la committee, me, san ti report, yes, you are aware, tianga, de ma xanim la committee, ah, bagra, si, bagra, November seventeen, twenty twenty, a sesion gi de, e, no se be la committee, bo, ulior ngi, eh, a, sera December first, man ati le la committee, mitlo ngem, bekl members, se gida, ma, misang, me, sign ngi, so it's been signed, me, me, dal sin. Mr. Spigir, mi ti la house joint resolution, a, a more approve and authorize la gor state legislature, el mo borrow an amount not to exceed twenty five million dollars. El mo finance state public programs, a state operations, with expenditure of any borrowed funds, and most subject to the state appropriation law, state of koror, and to offset economic impacts of COVID nineteen pandemic. Mr. Spigir, ma committee ra, beks lip to report, is follows. Mesela, ti la house joint resolution, se gi de, a November seventeen, twenty twenty, a sesion gi de, al tang, delegat, man gur, lul, April ulior, amne introduce ngi, e, me, degao, amne refer ti ati, resolution mora committee ra ways and means. Se gi de, blak, iwe ta ito ringi, Mr. Spigir, mal dra taq, proposal ngi, ati 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 resolution, a monsa te ala, gor state legislature, krisi, el mo borrow up to twenty five million dollars, most of it, most will finance a public programs, ma state operation, miltip. Se, ma clop ilkul, as, if this loan is secured, e mogi wa la ra gor state, logi wa authorization appropriation expenditure. Ma committee ra, Mr. Spigir, a reorganize, a, a spel ulior, gor state during this anticipated time, ti ati, de, mesula, bulu belao, no gi a COVID nineteen, if fully support the proposal, ti la house joint resolution. Ak mal, mispiir, mo report, as, sera August twenty one, twenty twenty, a gor state governor, Franco B T. Bonds, amne sa, mi tra gor state government, COVID nineteen strategic financial plan. El mo ra vice chairman, ra, committee ra ways and means, e niya delegat ulior, delegat lul. Se ti agi de financial plan is the result, la, amne inter branch collaboration by gor state government. E ti ati agi de, la, amne inter branch financing working group, e no address like a challenges of COVID nineteen, global pandemic, amla, a post, se mora state economy ulior, e gi de, amla ngi, direct Republic of Palau, particularly the significant reduction in tourism revenue. Ti agi de financial plan, amne concludes that state revenue shortfall will exceed somewhere around twenty five million by twenty twenty two. And the request, ti resolution ulior, until ulior, amne request the national government, el gi de la source of funding, or, a national government, ta mo provide a guidance, ma support, el mo help ulior secure a loan from a third party, bank, or a country, or other financial institution. Ma, kadama, mispiir, wasia, mesela, September two, twenty twenty, during its sixth regular session, a eleven gor state legislature, amne adopt a tablo resolution, in the furtherance, a resolution of the conclusion reached in the financial plan, se, inter branch working group. Ma first legislature resolution eleven forty three, e niya, amne gor state legislature, life, gor state legislature resolution, mo authorize and encourage la governor Ki Bons, el mo explore a state borrowing in consultation with the inter branch financing working group. A second, a state of koror legislature resolution, amne number eleven forty four, ti adel eleven forty four, amne direct request to the Olbi Ralulaw, gi de la, to national government, to take steps necessary, in proper to fund gor state operations. Se ti adel resolution eleven, a forty four, a gor state legislature, amne request the national government, directly to give gor state a twenty five million dollar loan, ma state, eh, lo, 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 se ra, operation, ma program ngi, e ti alu do, ta mo, repenya gor state to the withholding of gor state annual public grant for twenty five years. Malu, in the alternative side, amne request the Olbi Ralulaw, take necessary steps to allow the state legislature to borrow money up to twenty five million. Following the receipt, ti agi de financial plan, sera September second, a resolution, ma review, logi wa constitutionali, na, constitutional authority, ki la gor state to borrow money, was requested by delegat ulior, delegat lul, e, ogi se gi, e no introduce ti agi de, house joint resolution ten, a seventy four, a seventeen S. Ma, do, mal, my Mr. Spigir, a state legislature, ngari a, PCL, by constitutional republic or bela, belao, to borrow money to finance public program, or settle public debt pursuant to ROP constitution, article eleven, section four. Ti adel power is subject to the approval of Olbi. When approved, a state legislature would have the same powers as the Olbi Ralulaw. Enumerated by power, na la constitution, el mo borrow, although, under credit of national government, to finance public operations or to settle debt. Se, wuk, a, utirap la constitution, belao, article nine, section five, e, pula, as, typically, through the joint resolution, wait ti, doru ngi, a Olbi Ralulaw, a di, delegates' power to borrow, to the executive branch with the legis, with the delegation, defines, again, perimeters in which the executive branch can exercise such power. From the members, a, a resolution, a sovereign warrant, ki mora, BSCC, that was, this sentence means. Alternatively, approval of a state legislature power to borrow, is not, again, is not a delegation of power of Olbi Ralulaw. Nende, delegat, a PCL, Olbi Ralulaw, mora state. Instead, it is the approval of the state legislature enumerated power to borrow. Se, da, mal, sa, consistent with the language, sa constitution, a blur belao, a house joint resolution ten, a seventy four, a seventeen, ti, a dosa, ringi, opens the door, el mora gor state legislature, se el mo borrow up to twenty five million to finance programs, and settle public debt, i.e. obligations for the state government operation. Mr. Spigir, ma, Olbi Ralulaw has approved state legislature to borrow on several occasions in the past. For example, sera on ngi wi de olbi, eh, Olbi Raliliyalla, ti gi de ngi, a five PNC, section four oh one, e niya, amne RPL seven, a twenty five, se mesak, misi, a bek, the state, a government, belao. El mo borrow, malu, be, to secure a line of credit up to two million, if their own sole responsibility to pay, ta lo spe ra, sovereign guarantee, malu, be gorra, full faith credit, a national government. Direct, Mr. Spigir, Olbi Ral, a, filt, Olbi Ralulaw, ne adoration, gor state, el mo borrow up to one million, for the purpose of design and construction of gor state state building, which, by the way, a, spe, niya, gor state, el mo borrow, di, di, mi borrow, a half a million dollars, se gi de time, around two oh one, two oh three, and you can see now, the state building, or, they only use half a million dollars in loan, they have recently paid that loan, a few years back. Mr. Spigir, mesel, do mesri ngi, ikiel, to example, through enactment of law, a constitution, a belao, require solid approval of Olbi Ralulaw. Ni Olbi Ralulaw, go ngi, se be, open rat sim for any state to borrow money. Adoption, ti, joint resolution by both houses, gi de, ma senate, is an appropriate mechanism, el mo express, se gi de, approval of the Olbi Ralulaw. Again, not to approve the loan, but, repeat, to approve, ra, a mo open rat sim for gor state to go and borrow the money. Ak mo, pula, isel, as we speak, gi de, ma gor state, a, 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 a loan, as we ringu, ra, ra, financial institution, te la, a interest rate, ringi, na la, a term of payments, ringi, ra, quest period, ringi, and how soon they gonna be able to pay back. Ikiya, diha, gal, patmo, se, open rat sim, logi ti a resolution, ti ram, usta, de mo, do, any financial institution, or banks, or a country government, to government, and who decide ra lunga la loan, and most be, till adra gor state, ta mo apply. Mr. Spigir, it is possible that a lender, in the future, once gor states start negotiating, may require the national government to co-sign or guarantee a loan to gor state government. In such case, or in such action, will require another act of the Olbi Ralulaw, ki, ra, to olbi. El guk, mo, mesel review, ti agi de, lo, mena, do, do, gor state, el multirak, karra, article nine, section five, la constitution. Mr. Spigir, after a thoughtful review of this document from gor state, ti, babiel, billski, financial report, amara, e, a, the legal basis for approval of gor state legislature power to borrow, a committee ra, amne held a tool hearing, with the leadership of gor state. Agote, sera, November twenty three, twenty twenty, e, amit ra, mha, spigir, ura nga sulem, me, joint committee, remitra, Mr. Governor Ki Bons, ma director of finance, Mr. Chin. The attendees, a, governor, ma, Mr. Chin, a expressed their support for house joint resolution ten, a seventy four, a seventeen S. E, me, we, reintroduce, a, se, revenue shortfall, ma, ni, sa gor state, this year, eh, into the foreseeable futu, is a must, e, ospea, a help, a national government, to gi wa ti agi de ulior. Lastly, on Monday, May dori, twenty twenty, your committee met with, I mean, November twenty four, your committee held a meeting with Speaker Marbo, and other members of the eleven gor state legislature. Although some concern were raised by some members regarding the power to borrow, Speaker Marbo and other majority of legislators ulior, gor state in attendance expressed their full support for the house joint resolution ten, a seventy four, seventeen S. As a means, Mr. Spigir, to offset some of the economic impact that the COVID global pandemic has had for gor state, and of course, we see it for the whole Palau. Eh, lastly, mister Spieger, sera mandera, May, November Dori, na niya waiga debel, mitingrhaaw, ma President Rebelaw, Minister of Finance, ma President, uh, Senate, Mghau, ma Deputy Chief of Staff, President, eh, you called me in, eh, after you had discussed other matters. Eh, gao, ma Minister of Finance, samne expressed tu do, chairman, akami tirgawa, we say means, so as it, ta twenty-five million, or ya ngai, don't tirak korostate ta ala atel give, lokting, ado mes, lo mes ngai, mister, uh, finance, le ngai amu, muet adu ra ra, eh, di mil gidentia. And kasi, keliel sipedel, du lile di mo fifteen, is a start eh, de mes ngai going forward. Mongo giu sayi, eh, ta ra amenment temu tere resolution, amu rees ngai from twenty-five to fifteen. Direkore, eh, eh, di mini teknikal, eh, mainment ona tiar. Man, katse, from me, amal, norma, attending, moran estela klou state, yedam dangay palestics of a korostate, nga riya senktor timra, mira next year, eh, di, eh, di, bo meya senktor, nga niya klou, ilkola political la pel taku wora, adolongulil gidentia ulor. Ri mo anes loais, eh, ba di chiringel, ki da blakatla, ma hiiringel, ta kudnyas, isel hiiringel, guk pel hold nyas, senate, ki osiut togoi, mi la ti di, ma ra ado ulor, emesa, ndi ki da nomraer, ado ulor, mesa, miti, yedro, begela Governor, ma Director of Finance, eh, ra korostate, regemister, Spieger, Marbo. Mung Spieger, bottom line is, ki da dhaak approval of loan of fifteen million, el mo ra korostate. Kid, adi mo approve, tal, open raaxim, mesebele korostate, as a government, el mo approach for any financial institution, eh, borrow raudaud. Al sugum, ma au require, sel lending agency, malu, sel lending bank, uh, financial institution, malu, sel bulu, ADB, eh, ma require us, ndiya korostate, sumea fifteen million, di ayospeera sovereign guarantee ra clou government terme. Then and only then, will it come back to us. By then, eh, ki damu sibedro, mesa, total financial information, ra korostate, eh, guk mesa, yes, wa la, lending institution. Man, simple as that. Akmo repeat, tere resolution does not improve a penny of any loan, el mo ra korostate. Thank you very much, agat de al, mora germa, angel, malu, psa, ah, pa, psa, akota, psat de alla, abai, chairman, de geta, bru ulor, nga riya sal mo boonge, ilabonge, awrest, el bra, eh, awrest, la member ra committee. Sula, mister Spieger.
Sula, eh, chairman, malu, mi ri porti, agot edo psa, de lela, introduce her, a mile, direkt buigra, bru ulor. Eh, me introduce, tiang, da, direl, malu, sanla, do, meski, da, mu, piksi, urngi, la, omte, ra, bru ulor. Kabonge, etanak, de li getra, bru ulor.
Sula, te al, Spieger, malu, tu tal mor gao, tu tal mora, vice, ma, lo lider gid, ma, kosa, tu kol, aki gid, la, alura. Eh, sula, te al, chairman, we send mission. Bu, blakatla, akami ti reporti gid, ra history, ma recording, eh, tal, resolution, ra the introduction, eh, ngai, mu, mu, ta, ma, kada, lo, ngai, na madu, ra, la, 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 akami ti report. Mister Spieger, ndi, say gid, la, mu, o, ra, o, ur, akami ti, ma, am lotma, lunkela chairman, ma, of course, a leader civil republic. Rengas, isel, lo, tila, leader civil republic, to unia, president of republic, president of the senate, ma Spieger, a house, akami ti, a vice and means, a house. Direge, Spieger, no, the si, say gid, la, ngi, ta, kada, me, la, du, eh, ha, personi, me, la, go, la, nga, kide, te, gid, la, ngi, ta, ah, ngi, ta, knilun, mu, mu, ra, a korostate, ma, me, ta, ra, a korostate, to unia, Governor, ma chairman, a vice and means, ra, olbira, olbira, korostate, eh, Spieger. Say gid, Spieger, a kor, tritere, la, loan, isel, blakatla, wasia, seven, twenty, uh, eleven, twenty-three, ma eleven, twenty-four, eh, ki gid, la, paper trailer, gid, la, ngi, ta, la, loan, ra korostate. Spieger, ndi, nga, niya, ma, na madu, ra, sel report, ma, swal, kor, emphasize, ngai, la, page two, or five. Eh, mor, sel line three, eh, malu, blakatla, wasia, request, the national government, to be a source of funding, siya, gottel. So, the outline, eh, ngai, tal, akami ti report, upload, la, chairman, eh, say gid, la, das, kosi, nasangsel, a korostate, ta, la, ngi, ta, la, klol, amta, la, nasangsel. Eh, diregal, nga, le, da, ado, olbira, ulor, al, mo, ngi, asu, mal, deka, sipela, a korostate, national, la, ngi, ta, es, ma, kada, mu, adu, par, is, Spieger, mal, blakatla, ansela, brus, uh, akami ti report, resolution, is Spieger, wasi, kada, mu, ra, adu, par, im, am, angela, national government, uh, to unia, o, i, ke. Spieger, a, ika, ma, na madu, ya, ma, mu, blakatla, wo, and, da, du, la, la, on the record, is Spieger, de dilu, ra, alsela, boat, hehing, lunkela Governor, lunkela olbira, ulor, wasi, uh, amle, lo, ngi, ta, me, ra, alsela, o, i, ke, a resolution, eleven, twenty-three, eleven, twenty-four, ma, babingela, Governor, blen, saingela, nga, ta, ka, Governor Franco Gibbons, nga, niya, Spieger, Alan Marbo, ma, nga, niya, du, ni, ta, Gibbons. Eh, gid, te, de, lingu, kla, korostate, ta, u, to, bi, babingela, me, la, ngi, ta, president, oh, ngi, ta, Spieger, oh, ngi, ta, president, the senate, eh, ga, gid, te, ta, kor, a loan, ra twenty-five million. Akmo, to, bi, a resolution, is Spieger, lo, be, is, a, sel, da, tila, ra, amle, la, korostate government. Direge, lo giu, say gid, Spieger, kada, na, to, bi, me, la, ulole, dem, ga, no, ra, akami tirgawa, we send means, eh, gid, a chairman, na, o, ti, sel, ra, drogi, ngi. Mu, bol, blakatla, bekl, ado, wasi, ta, nga, dhaal, loan, ta, nga, angela, olbira, ulolal, mora, loan, a korostate, uspea, agesu, la, alta. Ntial, guk, twenty-five million, on tila, korostate, me, eh, a leader civil bela, diregal, nga, nomra, nasangsel, a korostate, masabela, korostate, te, ta, togoi, bela, ulogin, da, de, ta, korostate, is Spieger. Bol, blakatla, wasia, fifteen million, ablo, lo, mesri ngai, a leader civil bela, wasi, te, gid, la, apropiet. Eh, ndi, dhaal, ma, sim, sim, guk, kela, agesu, wasi, mu, ta, nga, mu, mu, sonos. So, the, no, wasi, gid, la, da, du, is Spieger, me, me, saralal, ba, al, da, du, na, ra, Governor, ma, chairman, a vice and means, ra, olbira, ulor, la, diru, til, wasi, me, am, da, du, ta, la, lon, tila, klol, am, te, ta, me, da, nga, lia, or, ta, la, bru, belaw. Bo, do, ventiri, da, nga, ta, fifteen million, on tiki, ngai, lunkela, alsela, se, ngai, miting, ma, ma, sel, a korostate government. Spieger, ma, ngi, ta, la, ulal, la, la, am, mal, blakatla, wasi, ulor, a, mo, ngi, ta, fifteen million, revidaction from twenty-five million, or, it's in a twenty-five million in loan, request requested. Say gid, Spieger, am, bol, blakatla, mu, bekl, ado, ulogin. Ndii, diregal, so, the, mu, bingela, ado, ulor, wasi, ta, nga, dhaal, loan, ra, national government, ma, ta, nga, angela, loan, ra, korostate government, ma, ndiak, sel, guarantee, ra, national government, ngai. Diregal, dhaal, do, me, wasia, korostate, uh, finance, finance, sel, starus, ngai, la, alta, mesele, lo, ngi, ra, fifteen million. Eh, say gid, a, ru, le, sel, bal, ado, du, tim, sel, lending agencies, eh, da, ma, da, ma, oh, wasi, wasi, ma, sel, la, mesil, wasi, sabela, a korostate, ta, lo, ngi, ra, up to fifteen, na, ma, dhaal, up to twenty-five, na, ma, up to fifteen, say gid, la, loan, eh, sent, ngai. Ma, u, kla, al, sabela, la, nga, ngai, kela, the institution, is Spieger, eh, u, sabela, seven, and eight, or, any number. Eh, diregal, guk, mosel, requirement, a guarantee, blakatla, constitution, a, a, asela, ti, akami ti report, ma, swal, wasi, eh, so, talat, ois, il, kodo, sa, ngai. Se, ngai, ki, gid, da, da, ma, ta, di, open ra, sim, mosela, da, du, lo, bu, is Spieger. Mu, mosela, korostate, ta, si, ra, dhu, par, im, me, tel, du, du, la, ru, ta, la, uh, government, ngai, eh, say gid, la, nga, niya, lo, tira, na, ge, da, mu, sa, ngai, la, government, ma, mung, sa, next, is Spieger. Say gid, di, bol, blakatla, ti, open, ngai, la, bekl, ado, ma, niya, ge, is Spieger, sera.
Yeah, yeah, ayusel, bru la, te al.
Sula, eh, delegate, ulor, la, ulala, open, ka, ka, ba, bo, eh, chairman, eh, ulala.
Lady put, le, preses, sera, one point, eh, mister Spieger, eh, era, bo, otob, Mister Spieger, na, um, na, sel, a, ulap, blakatla, ku, fado, ga, gair, el, wasia. Seri, May nineteen, twenty-twenty, eh, lela, government, a korostate. Di, budul, yutakati, bonds, Governor Gibbons, ma Spieger, Marbo. Eh, me, lu, se, belga, mister Spieger, lo, ai, wasi, ta, na, because of this COVID, ali, tiara, May, May nineteen, twenty-twenty, two months after, a close, a, border, gi. Emleba, bilingela, ibudul, ma Governor Gibbons, ma Spieger, Marbo. Di, lo, ai, wasi, is Spieger, nastasi, ma, um, na, sel, anna, niya, mora, senate president. El, wasia, ayin, na, create, ra, interbranch financing group, a korostate, and el mo draft, eh, ra, will, coveri, my expenditure mitigation plan with Asian Development Bank, eh, geret, can, fi, financial crisis, a bru ulor, because of COVID-nineteen pandemic. Si, May twenty-twenty. Em, agonge, September, tu, in, to, edu, resolution. Eh, imong, a resolution, a state, a state, korostate legislature, korostate legislature. Eh, la, ngi, ta, Governor, a korostate, bol, si, ga, ulala, loan. Ah, on, erum, eleven, twenty-four, korostate legislature. Ah, ngi, ta, ko, olbi, bol, si, la, korostate, la, loan. Mister Spieger, a, ulakmo, saita, ige, mal, blakatla, u, ta, me, la, la, rebelaw. En, nga, ra, akami ti report, eh, sa, eh, so, al, repeat, ngai. Kada, me, tige, ngai, ra, Article eleven, section four. Po, wasi, a state legislature, nga, niya, kisi, el, by constitution, a republic rebelaw, el mo, maleng, audaud, el mo, financial public program, in, setel, public, ten. Si, ya, ra, constitution, eh, mister Spieger. Article nine, section four. Say gid, a, belu, tu, ngai, a korostate legislature, el mo, lai, gal, tablo. El state resolution eleven, forty-three, ma eleven, forty-four. Ma, ndiak, la, Governor, a, uli, ngi, korostate legislature. A, uli, ngi, la, Governor, ti, eh, uli, ngi, ta, klou, Governor, olbira, rebelaw. El mo, open raaxim, bor, si, be, ni, masa, da, la, loan. Nothing more, nothing less. Blakatla, nga, la, constitution, la, pool, government, meseak, misi, a state government. El mo, maleng, audaud, for, sad, sin, sad, sin, sad. Ntial, do, ru, ngai, eh, di, na, lo, tira, Governor, a korostate, im, ndo, mol, dub, ngai. Ntirak, ra, constitution, eh, ti, lo, da, a resolution, a korostate, me, la, klou, lolbi, lo, ngi, ta, ngai, eh, direct, turnar, e, resolution, el mo, a Governor, a korostate, wasi, bo, mo, si, ga, ulala, loan. Sula, mister Spieger. Sula, eh, chairman, eh, ka, ma, ulal, eh, delegate, otob.
Spieger, mul, tutaya, mer, om, er, bekl, la. Spieger, akman, bingas, sulela, chairman, is all, uh, ma vice chairman, na, da, lul, kara, klou, bru, ulor. La, ut, ma, kli, tiang, eh, nga, uh, uh, ki, tial, kada, du, eh, nga, ogel, uh, chairman, da, lul, wasi, eh, ki, ti, ngai, dem, sel, ulor, mal, da, du, lunkela, ulor, mu, lo, nga, rang, ngi, gid, mu, lam, kat, kli. Mah, mal, blakatla, ulor, muktek, aw, sabela, om, so, de, la, mal, ngi. Eh, nga, ka, be, um, da, swat, ki, de, Spieger. Uh, klou, bru, ulor, ra, ada, camp, peni, ma, lai, gal, baby, ra, blu, eh, tal, gi, blu, ngi, la, resources, ngai, eh, eh, ol, ta, kor, a, klou, population. Mang, aus, ngai, kani, blol, wa, kor, a, big brother, malu, bang, ma, kut, lo, ma, kasi, kal, baby, ra, blu, ba, o, mes, ra, kasi, lem, su. Ma, tige, da, pu, axal, mal, so, al, mutro, si, eh, chairman, is all, am, lo, mu, kat, kli. Tial, resolution, na, dhaak, ta, ngela, ulor, el mo, maleng. Kada, ko, angela, se, kisi, el, ulor, di, wa, ik, al, bekl, blu, lu, tu, ra, constitution, giril, at, gor, unti. Malu, bu, du, du, niya, mo, si, geni, giril, la, bru, ulor. Si, a, nga, amal, supporting. Ah, on, erum, eh, so, al, mu, kat, kli, el, di, lu, ngi, le, chairman, eh, bu, kat, kli, kulu, wasi. Bela, ki, gid, blakatla, magli, mo, ulor, ra, uspe, ngai, eh, diregal, tokubet, se, sel, uh, uh, RPL, seven, twenty-five, chairman. Si, utu, ra, PNC Title Five, uh, subsection of four oh one. Mu, lo, wasi, a, olbira, ulam, la, ko, angela, eh, gal, legislature, eh, gal, blu, se, kisi, el, mobaro. Er, ti, na, eh, gam, la, mublik, ki, gid, la, la, am, la, ku, kli, se, chairman, eh, bal, gula, mo, o, mang, nga, niya, blu, mu, nga, niya, ta, rel, basul. Mang, swal, lo giu, ki, gid, lo, si, si, ra, eh, mo, si, ga, a, funding source, as a financial assistance. And, sabela, mobaro, do, the chairman, up to, two million, unli, de, kal, belo, giu, olbi, guk, but, lo, msa, oh, si, si, ul, kli, si, eh. Al, sabela, bu, kat, kli, se, chairman, na, u, ngil, swal, ma, lai, kal, bekl, sulan.
Say gid, RPL, seven, twenty-five, term, la, la, on, erum, with, lolbi, la, um, na, swa, at, rat, vice Spieger, mghawe, if, lo, leader. Amin, eh, gao, Spieger, ba, at, rat, vice Spieger, ma, delegate, ta, gaw, mu, am, eh, adra, for, old, olbi, mka, de, ni, member, ngai. Mal, me, clo, tira, Governor, si, ma, ma, eh, by, den, eh, a state, ramal, geyo, am, la, ngo, authorization for eight hundred thousand. Em, ru, rap, al, sa, on, ndi, di, na, kal, uspe, ngai, tu, end, apple, do, uspe, a, du, di. Eh, a korostate, la, uli, ra, am, ngo, approval, eh, ngai, mi, lolbi, for, one million, em, lo, end, apple, di, borrow, ra, half a million, em, la, pay, back, to, NDB, NDBP. Mesele, a, se, olbira, ulay, em, lo, klo, at, togoi, wasi, mem, mem, saq misi, a state government, em, diri, bil, kora, wasi, kli, sel, credit limited, ti, so to speak. Mang, kado, goi, melan, al, sugum, ma, any state, a, bru, belaw. Korostate, el mo, lai, ga, ngi, state, asal, borrow, am, audaud, el, up to, two million. And, sabela, il, di, ti, eh, mora, ngi, di, il, bank, commercial, or, NDBP, or even go through, an embassy at Taiwan, shell, right, the process. Eh, borrow, up to, two million, at their own sole responsibility to be paid. Eh, dhaal, uspe, a sovereign guarantee, ra, bru, ulor. Unless, unless, eh, sel, bank, a, mo, required, ti, ni, la, am, strate, al, na, me, diak. Eh, tial, sovereign guarantee, eh, dhaal, la, sing, la, rebelaw, so, everybody, follow it. Ngal, lo, to, draudaud, eh, ngai, gid, ya, begik, la, 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 du, eh, ngal, asala, guarantee, in, so, la, full faith credit, in, so, la, go, maker. But, tial, sovereign guarantee, eh, wasi, ta, klo, keda, ado, belaw, mang, gi, ya, la, da, di, follow, ngi, la, bekl, ta, no, no, you're wrong. Nara, u, ta, me, la, la, wasi. In, this, sugum, ma, bank, a, sing, ya, palaw, you look good, you have enough asset, you have enough income, and one need to pay this loan. And, dhaal, require, ngai, komo, mes, eh, ADB, dhaal, require, a sovereign guarantee, right, eh, gal, loan, eh, gid, blakatla, eh, ta, to, require, I don't think so. And, di, who require, a, NG, sel, na, de, tora, eh, se, private company. My, say, they borrow, somebody else's money, eh, eh, ma, mu, la, we, dem, they're, they're being told by their financial, eh, mix, eh, di, al, blu, haraw. Out, to, muspe, a sovereign. Uh, ter, recently, BCS, sel, government, ra, government, of Australia, miski, da, ester, du, ma, Michu. Si, me, require, ma, uli, ben, do, go, msaq misi, a president, em, se, cure, a sovereign guarantee. La, la, li, gi, bingi. Eh, se, kisi, a, a, olbi, ndiak, la, a, president. Man, um, na, sel, mal, clear. Unless, I'm wrong, eh, mister Spieger, ndi, I can be corrected. Eh, gal, ul, eh, gen, loan, ra, ADB, eh, gen, a, dhaal, do, uspe, a sovereign guarantee. Eh, di, msaq misi, a president, el mobaro, de, gid, ki, da, member, a ADB, nga, niya, in, er, gid. Seri, potation, a ADB, we had to pay a fee, kada, eh, el, bu, mister Sadan, ah, um, te, er, gid, a, member, na, board, a director, sa, NDBP. Mang, gra, mo, on, eh, ra, bang, eh, tun, a, rang, eh, yo, abra, a, NDBP, mu, ngi, borrow, audaud, eh, government, rebelaw. Al, em, subcomponent, government, eh, da, la, for, a ADB. And, all, they say, wasi, eh, mix, soon, a, ta, government, a, full faith credit, credit, or, eh, di, ta, klo, kela, bela. Klo, kela, klo, kela, we own it. I hope I make sense, and I hope korostate people, a, do, olbira, korostate, agir, ma, understand, eh, mister Spieger. It's not their governors who ask for this, it's them. Majority, la, korostate, legislature, am, eh, adapt, a, resolution, ma, nga, niya, tiri, ita, la, minority, mu, dhaal, ulor, seti. Sula, mister Spieger. Kabonge, delegate, ra, bru, ra, ra.
Sula, eh, Spieger, te al, eh, me, kuli, ta, ma, di, short recess, is Spieger, eh, verify, kal, baby, ra, torero, era, pokul, mu, mu, ma. Sabela, kuli, ta, ma, di, bale, edo, recess.
recess, eh?
Oi, please.
Short recess, komesa, time, eh, floridin, eleb, Dori, oh, eh, mang, ah, we, om, ulal, eh, floridin, eh, di, so, al, lo, to, di, a, a, u, de, ser, gid, la, akota, bingas, sulela, ah, we, sel, means, committee, ma, na, smodit, eh, ma, mu, kli, eh, report, eh, ma, kli. Diregal, lo, ai, sera, ra, belaw, to, unia, ra, ado, ulor. Bol, an, stand, de, wasin, ah, tial, olbira, ulaw, angu, sel, got, de, simbra. Sel, got, de, simbra, mong, wa, as, brer, ma, korostate, as, el, maleng, audaud. Di, se, guk, lo, kor, korostate, eh, nga, niya, tar, asimbra, asimbra, a, olbi, ulor, mesele, as, brer, la, Governor. Mesele, dhaal, ngai, ngai, em, mora, olbi, ra, ulor. Eh, bol, ngai, wasi, kada, mu, maleng, audaud, et, pas, ra, la, em, mu, mu, sa, Governor. Eh, say gid, as, me, Governor, eh, al, sa, eh, ngai, em, ma, se, el, mu, ta, goi. Ndii, got, em, o, gi, uti, eh, eh, so, la, em, mora, ADB, absolute, mu, maleng, audaud, a ADB. Si, tar, asimbra. Sel, bol, si, sel, nga, korostate, et, mong, a, ADB, ai, sel, ti, wasi, oh, eh, gi, ma, mesa, re, or, de, gum, in, se, be, la, hara, ortian. Ma, ki, oh, eh, gi, go, ngi, gum, mu, mong, wa, loan. Eh, sel, lo, wa, loan, eh, ngai, guk, May, el, mu, te, la, May, em, mor, olbi, eh, et, mor, uli, la, lot, to, bi, a, lo, uspe, ngi, sel, du, du. Eh, guk, mora, Governor, mang, guk, sa, eh, ngai, eh, so, la, se, gid, la, du, du, am, mora, tre, jur, eh, et, or, ta, program, ra, korostate. Say gid, la, say gid, sel, process, sel, bol, giu, nga, bekl, al, eh, giril, el, mo, understand, ngai. Ling, di, wa, eh, delegate, otob, di, wa, tial, one million, do, sa, korostate, ta, bekl, ra. Kada, mu, mu, mystery, eh, dhaal, kada, ku, lili, mu, eh, do, sa, ngai. Ta, bo, nga, ra, do, olbi, la, guk, mi, ngai, sel, lo, mesri, ngai, mu, ngai, em, mora, Governor, eh, Governor, a, a, sa, eh, ngai, eh, bol, la, et, mu, mu, iti, ngai, lu, tu, say gid, la, ra, korostate. Ki, da, li, bu, sa, da, a, u, ta, de, simbra, eh, so, al, lo, mu, ta, kara, ra, ado, lo, mesra, tial, ti, mi, mang, nga, ra, ado, lay, tor, sa, bekl, bru. Wasi, a, process, nga, niya, di, bo, da, da, sa, du, ngai, eh, baby, ra, time, mu, wa, wanai. Li, kada, mu, sa, du, ngai, dhaal, du, tira, kara, a, tele, tele, la, ulor. Ma, kmen, as, sulai, me, chairman, gao, ma, vice, ra, we, send means, na, ru, li, am, la, ngi, report. Diregal, so, al, mu, klat, kara, tire, lay, tor, sum, ma, a, Governor, sel, wasin, ah, on, tira, state, sel, la, May, em, mora, senate, ma, house, of delegate. Sabela, ngi, di, blai, lo, mu, un, a, ulerel. nga, niya, baby, ra, ah, om, blu, lo, wasi, na, mora, senate, em, ta, mu, mor, kadi, ndiak, bol, lo, ru, ru, ngi. Eh, ra, adra, house, nga, ra, is, eh, em, ta, ma, u, ru, ru, ngi. Diregal, sa, bol, kli, eh, du, du, ra, la, ra, bru, wasi, sel, la, may, tablo, oh, ngi, ma, ulas, eh, mil, me, lai, gal, tablo, blai. Eh, sabela, ngi, di, tar, a, gal, blai, el, mo, ulor, ngi. Ma, ndiak, la, el, simbra, al, so, la, eh, mong, eh, os, brer, eh, senate, ndi, house, a, open, ngai, ma, lu, bu, du, guk, os, brer, eh, adha, senate, a, open, ngai. Say gid, a, tele, tele, la, ulor, oh, eh, mang, di, bol, blakatla, eh, delegate, otob, da, wasin, ta, ma, la, sa, du, ngai, ma, klou, du, du, eh, eh, lo, dhaal, sabela, korostate, di, nga, ni, sel, om, lang, mes, a, do, olbira, ulaw. Wasi, a, ul, bu, du, yot, to, bi, a, one million, en, mong, blak, grant, am, na, moria, olbi, ulor, na, moria, Spieger, nga, niya, Governor. nga, niya, rub, ul, belaw, ma, mesele, ulor, tir, ga, ya, ma, ngar, ra, bru. Al, sugum, dhaal, so, la, ado, lay, tor, sel, du, ul, 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 ul. Eh, sel, bol, sen, kiel, sen, kiel, otob, da, ti, eh, lo, la, la, ves, la, ado, mong, say gid, a, process, eh, eh, delegate, otob, da, say gid, a, process, ra, a, tele, tele, la, ulor. Hmm, di, mki, ta, ngai, kada, mu, ngi, le, war, rak, mu, ti, ma, ado, ndi, kada, mu, ngi, ringi, mu, war, rak, eh, eh, guk, ol, to, bu, ngi. Ma, lu, be, kada, uli, a, uli, go, em, di, tar, a, go, to, bu, di, sugum, ma, mu, si, wanai. Say gid, a, tele, tele, la, ulor, mu. Di, so, al, di, mu, kat, kli, si, eh, nga, am, la, jion, gum, ya, member, sa, commit, eh, a, we, send means, eh, ol, ngi, ta, gum, mu, bu, swed, lo, pi, tiang. Eh, as, eh, a, senate, bu, gan, si, der, ngai, eh, da, o, mesri, ngai, ma, nga, bru, ngela, December. Eh, nga, niya, up, until, January, twenty, eh, sel, ves, pas, ngi. Guk, ter, li, bu, la, nga, la, kla, eh, da, mora, ves, government, ra, eleven, gum, mu, na, nga, eh, da, mora, eleven, eh, guk, mu, mesri, ngi, losin. Eh, la, da, guk, mu, ru, ra, ves, ru, ru, bu, nga, la, tele, tele. Kabonge, chairman, a, we, send means. Mal, di, merai, is Spieger, mister Spieger, ki, da, mal, blakatla, tete, tial, system, regid, la, government, ta, nga, niya, kor, government, eh, nga, niya, constitution, regid, nga, niya, kisi, il, dollar. By the same time, kada, me, by constitution, du, kui, ta, state government. Em, agor, msaq misi, el, ma, mu, ru, la, constitution, ngai, malu. Eh, ta, sel, do, mes, la, constitution, regid, nga, niya, gel, nga, nga, eh, im, la, government, the national, mora, state. Obur, du, ndi, nga, niya, ta, kona, wa, paro, wi, ma, ik, agid, el, direct, link, kuk, kisi, el, a, state, te, dingi. Say gid, la, dhaal, gi, red, em, mo, tu, eh, il, ma, dr, ngai.
Because I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm sacrifice a state. Hey, I'm going to ask. So I'm going to ask. Do you want? And slowly, maybe twenty years from now, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. The state, fifty million, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Do you want? Do you want to see it? I'm going to ask. Do you want to talk? I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. And they are going to ask. But I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Sure.
So you're going to, can I, Florida? I'm going to ask.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. The resolution, I'm going to ask. 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 I understand, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. And above two million. And I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. And it's something I'm going to ask. It's something I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. And then, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. So you're going to ask two million? And they are going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Two million, I'm going to ask. So you're going to pay it. You're going to ask. You're going to ask. Tax, I'm going to ask. So I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Investors, I'm going to ask. 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 Pay that one million or one point five, two million. So with the general law. I'm going to ask. So you're going to ask. I'm going to ask. So I'm going to ask. So you're going to ask. And I'm going to ask. But I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Maybe, so I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. But I'm going to ask. And I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Only, I'm going to ask. Because I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. So I'm going to ask. 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 I'm going to ask.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Do I send it? I'm going to ask. Hundred percent.
Acclamation?
Oh, oh. I'm going to ask.
So move the roll call, Speaker. The resolution.
Oh. Oh. So you're allowed. You're going to ask. Do you want to? I'm going to ask. Hundred percent, I'm going to ask. Can I, the clerk? Oh. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask.
Delegate Arura.
Oui.
Delegate Basilius.
Oui.
Delegate Gibbons Junior. Delegate Colibert. Delegate Isan.
Oui.
Floor Leader Ganai.
Yes.
Delegate Kamsong. Delegate Marino.
Yes.
Delegate Mamaes. Vice Speaker Ngiraywet.
Oui.
Delegate Ngiratkak Ganai.
Oui.
Delegate Ongidobla. Delegate Otobdo.
Oui.
Delegate Traalulko. Delegate Sayiske. Speaker Anastasio.
Oui.
Mr. Speaker, I'm going to ask. House Change Resolution ten thousand seventy four thousand seventeen S. I'll leave it there.
So you're going to, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. And I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. And I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Florida.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. The reading, I'm going to ask. Twelve, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Adapt the ST one, the House Bill number ten thousand one six. One six thousand eleven, ST one.
So you're going to move. And the second day, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. And I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Oh, I'm going to ask. The House Bill, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. So you're going to move.
Delegate Arura.
Oui.
Delegate Basilius.
Speaker, I'm going to ask. 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 I'm going to ask.
House Bill number ten thousand one sixteen thousand eleven, ST one, ST one. I'm going to ask. Chapter one, four, seven, title fifteen, the National Code. Telecommunication Act of twenty seventeen. I'm going to ask. Subtract the universal access levy. I'm going to ask. I use loan payment. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Telecommunications service companies. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to introduce it. I'm going to ask.
Okay, so you're going to ask. I'm going to ask.
Delegate Arura.
Oui.
Delegate Basilius.
Oui.
Delegate Gibbons Junior. Delegate Colibert. Delegate Isan.
Oui.
Floor Leader Ganai.
Oui.
Delegate Kamsong. Delegate Marino.
Oui.
Delegate Mamaes. Vice Speaker Ngiraywet.
Oui.
Delegate Ngiratkak Ganai.
Oui.
Delegate Ongidobla. Delegate Otobdo.
Oui.
Delegate Traalulko.
Oui.
Delegate Sayiske. Speaker Anastasio.
Oui.
Mr. Speaker, I'm going to ask. House Bill number ten thousand one sixteen thousand eleven, ST one, ST one. I'll leave it there.
So you're going to, the ST one, the House Bill, I'm going to ask. Eleven yes, I'll leave it. Florida.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Resolution, item thirteen. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. House Change Resolution number ten thousand seventy five thousand seventeen S. I'm going to ask. Prescom two thirty seven. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. So you can assign it to committee. And committee, I'm going to ask. So, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. House Change Resolution number ten thousand seventy five thousand seventeen S. Under, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask.
Placement, resolution, I'm going to ask. Committee. Energy.
I'm going to ask. Can I, can I, to be asked? Oh, I'm going to ask, Florida.
I'm going to ask. We see, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. At this time, I'm going to ask. Place, the House Change Resolution number ten thousand seventy five thousand seventeen S. Under, I'm going to ask. Committee.
Okay. So I'm going to ask.
I'm going to ask.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Delegate Basilius, I'm going to ask.
Energy Committee. Energy Communication and Transportation.
Oh, oh.
I'm going to ask. Please, Speaker, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Adapt the House Change Resolution number ten thousand seventy four thousand seventeen S. I'm going to ask. Committee.
Okay. So you're going to ask. Clear, I'm going to ask.
House Change Resolution number ten thousand seventy four thousand seventeen S. The House Change Resolution, I'm going to ask. State Legislature, I'm going to ask. They are going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. State, my program. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Economic impact, I'm going to ask. I'm going to introduce it. I'm going to ask.
So you're going to ask. And I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask.
I'm going to ask.
Can I, Otobdo?
Speaker, for clarification, I'm going to ask. Eh, Florum, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. My, a single.
Oh, I'm going to ask.
Oh, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask accordingly. Okay, sure.
I'm going to ask.
Okay, sure.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Florida, I'm going to ask. And I'm going to ask. The formality, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Number ten thousand seventy four thousand seventeen S. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Do I?
Oui.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask, Florida, reflect the roll call, give it a committee report. The formality, I'm going to ask. Florida.
I'm going to ask. Resolution calendar, thirteen, Silby. Adaptation, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Speaker, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Introduce it, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. And the decision, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Joint Resolution, or Single Resolution. So at this time, Speaker, I'm going to ask. Place, the Joint Resolution. Number ten thousand seventy six thousand seventeen, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. So at this time, I'm going to ask. Placement, the House Change Resolution number ten thousand seventy six.
I'm going to ask. Joint Resolution, do I? I'm going to ask. So please, Florida.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Place, the House Joint. No, House Single Resolution. Ten thousand one eighteen thousand seventeen S.
I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. The House Single House Resolution. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask.
I'm going to ask. Yeah. At this time, I'm going to ask. Adapt it, I'm going to ask. House Joint Resolution number ten thousand seventy six thousand seventeen S. I'm going to ask.
I'm going to ask. So you're going to ask. And I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Florida.
I'm going to ask. Adapt it, I'm going to ask. Ten thousand one one eight thousand seventeen S. And I'm going to ask. Resolution, I'm going to ask. 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 Finalize the Single Resolution.
Are you second? So you're going to ask. I'm going to ask. Adapted. The single House Resolution. Today. On top.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The resolution.
Okay. Clear.
House Joint Resolution Number 10-76-17S. The resolution. I'm expressing support. I'm sorry. State. New Rice. Ole Housing Subdivision Project. The delegate's introduction. The delegate Pasilius.
Okay, is the second?
So we are. So we are adapting. The joint. The. The.
The. The.
Oh. Okay. I'm making a motion. Adapted. House Joint Resolution Number 10-76-17S.
So we are talking about. The House Joint Resolution. The. The. Today. Today. On top. The. 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 Resolution. Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Now. I'm sorry. Place. Standing Committee Report Number 10-125. And the. The. House Joint Resolution Number 10-75-17S.
See you.
Five? 125. The. House Joint Resolution Number 10-75-17S.
So we are. Making a. Second is. Place. Standing Committee Report. Item. Item 9A. The delegate is. Today. Today. On top. So please, floor leader.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Adaptation. Report. 10-125.
Okay. So we are. Making a. The. Report.
Chairman of Energy.
Oi, Chairman. Pasilius. The last report. The. 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 I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mister Speaker, I'm sorry. 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 Mister Speaker. I'm sorry. The. Resolution. The House Joint Resolution 10-75-17S. The. The. Adapted. The. President. I'm sorry. 10 million. The Asian Development Bank. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Operation. Renewable Energy Acquisition Effort. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The. House Joint Resolution. Speaker. The. First reading. 17 Special Session. December 14, 2020. The. 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 Speaker. I'm sorry. President. Tamira Mosa Junior. I'm sorry. Speaker. I'm sorry. The. Paragraph. I'm sorry. The. Committee. I'm sorry. Review. The. Resolution. Support. For. The. Resolution. I'm sorry. Speaker. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Support. National Policy Initiatives. Provide. Clear Direction. Future. Thank you. For. Including. Regional. International Agreement. I'm sorry. Make a commitment. I'm sorry. 20%. Allow Energy Generation. Logi. Renewable Energy. By 2020. And the. Commitment. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. National Determined ContribUTIONal Goals. The. Paris Agreement. I'm sorry. 45%. Allow. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Renewable Energy Source. By 2025. I'm sorry. Speaker. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Objectives. I'm sorry. Energy Sector. I already undertake. The. Effort. I'm sorry. Effort. Upgrade. I'm sorry. Clear. The. I'm sorry. Reliable. Resilient Energy Independence. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Dependence. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Imported Fuel. I'm sorry. Speaker. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Understand. I'm sorry. 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 Private Investment. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Renewable Energy Goals. I'm sorry. In doing so, speaker. And require a PPUC. I'm sorry. Financially Healthy. I'm sorry. Speaker. The. Resolution. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. President. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. 10 million. I'm sorry. ADB. The. The. PPUC. I'm sorry. Physical Health. Allow. PPUC. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Renewable Energy Goals. I'm sorry. Speaker. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Impact. The. COVID-19. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Fortune. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And the. Our residents. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Economic Effect. My Distraction. Employment. I'm sorry. My. Economic Loss. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Provider. I'm sorry. Service. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hopefully. Allow them to continue. To receive. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Distraction. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Speaker. Appreciate. A PPUC's Chief Executive Officer. Correct. Logi. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My board. Resolution. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Provide. Information. I'm sorry. Request. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Resolution. I'm sorry. Document. Speaker. I. I attach. The. Report. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Correct. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My. Board. Resolution. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Committee. Support. I'm sorry. Indorsement. The. Loan. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. President. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Loan. Document. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.